Meeting, Cateen, roll call.
Dr. Cordellino.
Here.
Mr. Daughtry.
Here.
Mrs. Fano.
Here.
Mr. Grau.
Here.
Mr. Palmer. Mr. Petrazzino.
Here.
Mr. Rappaport.
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman.
Here.
Dr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Brookhauser.
Here.
Ms. Patel.
Here.
Okay, pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open public meeting notice, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, and the Montville Tap into, the board's official newspapers on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Brookhauser, Ms. Patel, our new student reps. Would you like to introduce yourselves and give us a little bit of information on the high school?
Hello, everyone. So I'm Benjamin Brookhauser, and I'm the SAC Student Council President for the school right now. And here.
I'm Gia Patel. I'm the Class of Twenty Twenty Five President, so Student Council President.
So tonight, we have a little bit of the past stuff that has happened in the school, some of the present, and then some stuff that's going to happen in the future as well. So we're going to start off with the past. As everyone knows, school started September third, and I'm just going to give a little rundown of what the sports have done. So the girls varsity soccer team is five and one. They beat Pope John, Lakeland, Mendham, Cranford, and Morris Hills, and their one loss was to Precipiny Hills. The girls varsity volleyball team is three and one. They lost their first game to Milburn, but are now on a three-game winning streak, beating Randolph, West Morris, and Morris Knowles. The boys varsity soccer team has a record of one win, one loss, and two ties. They won their first game against Pope John, then proceeded to tie the next two against Caldwell and Sparta, and with their latest game, they lost to Precipiny Hills four to one. And the girls varsity field hockey has a record of two wins and three losses. They won their first game against Wayne Hills, lost the next three to West Morris, Verona, and Piquanik, and their latest game, they won by beating Morristown. So that kind of wraps up the sports, and now kind of on to the clubs and different things that have went on in the school. So the Gracies Army Club sold gold T-shirts in the rotunda during lunch on Thursday, September fifth, and Friday, September sixth, to wear to the Gold Out football game for that Friday night, and to also raise money for childhood cancer. The late bus started September ninth for the high school. The Montville Theater Company has announced that their fall production will be Alice in the Wonderland, and they have their interest meetings already for that, and they also have a meeting for the stage crew as well, so they're kind of all set with that. Last week was the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Week, and each day through Schoology, which is our, like, school students' kind of website that we all use for different announcements and classes. They were posting spotlights and different information about important resources for students, staff, and parents to check out. Montville also had their first Spirit Week last week. On Monday, it was Occupation Day. People dressed as an occupation of their choice. Tuesday, it was Twin Day, where people dressed identical to another kid or kids in the school. Wednesday was USA Day for nine eleven. People wore red, white, and blue. Thursday was Jersey Shore versus Jersey Day, and people dressed to go to either the beach or as if they were going to a game with a jersey. And Friday was Color Wars, where freshmen wore yellow, sophomores wore green, juniors wore white, and seniors wore black. At the end of Spirit Week, on Friday, we held our first school pep rally. We had five different events, including flag football, the water bucket and sponge relay race, potato sack race, a grade-wide scavenger hunt, and lastly, a tug-of-war game. Both students and teachers participated in certain events. It ended up being a big success for our first one of the year, and now I'm going to pass it on to Gia. She's going to go through the present and the future.
Thank you, Ben. So, as you all probably know, Back to School Night and the Club Fair will be this Thursday, September nineteenth, and students will be able to browse through the club tables at the Club Fair during lunch. The Club Fair will also resume at six thirty, which is a half hour before Back to School Night officially begins at seven. Ambassadors from Student Council, Key Club, NHS, and PAL will be assisting parents as they are in the building. Key Club is once again having a Back to School Night VIP parking auction, and the highest bidders will be given VIP parking spots to avoid the struggle that most parents have to find parking spots. The proceeds will be used for Key Club's upcoming events. Also, right now, the Class of Twenty Twenty Five and Class of Twenty Twenty Six are hosting a combined Mums fundraiser with Condorso's. Orders will be accepted until October second, and people will be able to pick up their orders until October twentieth. Senior portrait retakes are also available right now, and the retake dates are scheduled for October seventeenth and eighteenth. Today, the National Merit Scholarship semifinalists were also announced, and from MTHS, Hong Jin Kao and Curtis Wang have been named. So, this week, later this week, Gracies Army's Foundation will hold a five K fun run at the high school at nine AM on Sunday, and it's just to raise money and donations for the foundation. Next week, there will also be representatives from numerous colleges coming to share information on their respective schools, and the schools that are coming to MTHS next week are NJIT, Stockton University, Lafayette College, George Washington University, Bucknell University, William Patterson, Michigan State University, and LSU. On Sunday, September twenty ninth, from one to three PM at the high school, there is also a Military Service Academy info session. So we'll have representatives from all the academies, including the Naval Academy, West Point, Air Force, Merchant Marine Academy, Coast Guard Academy, and a bunch of the ROTC scholarship programs. This would be a very good opportunity for any students, particularly juniors or seniors, who are interested in these types of programs. Both the girls tennis teams and the boys soccer teams' next games are tomorrow. Girls tennis will be away at Morris Hills at four, and boys soccer will be away at Wayne Valley, which is also at four. Field hockey and girls volleyball will be at home on Thursday. Field hockey will be playing Randolph, and volleyball will be playing Morristown. Both those games are also at four PM. Girls soccer will play on Thursday, but they'll be away versus Lenape Valley at six thirty. And this Friday, football will look to get their record to four and oh when they verse Roxbury away at seven PM. That's it, thank you.
By the way, can I also just mention that, tack on to the games, sports? All the sports are free, except for football. So come on out and support the Montville High School teams. It's a lot of fun, you'll enjoy it, but good luck to everyone.
Good point. Question everybody's wondering, what did you dress up as for Occupation Day?
What did I dress up as?
So, on Occupation Day, I dressed up as a caddy, because I'm a caddy for a country club. So I wore my, I wore khakis and a collared shirt, and then I threw my caddy bib on, so.
Very nice.
I dressed up as a dentist, because, yeah.
Very good, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, excellent job tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Dr. Gorman, would you like to go with your presentations?
Sure. Charlene, we're going to start with you. But we're in our, we're on our third week of school right now. We're off to a great start at all the levels. Some normal hiccups that we have here and there, but we're working out some of those kinks, but overall, it's been great. We've had two of the Back to School Nights already, and the last one is going to be this Thursday with the high school. So we're excited to get the whole year rolling. Ms. Peterson, why don't you take the podium? You have the microphone right there, and she'll be working with the board right now on the board's self-evaluation.
Great, thank you so much, Hassan, I guess. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today, to continue working with the board. And so like we said, tonight, we're talking about the board's self-evaluation. So for the benefit of the audience here, you know, the state used to require that boards had to take some time and reflect, you know, on their board's self-evaluation, and then maybe it's about five years ago or so that they relaxed that requirement. So now we say that boards that would do this, do it because it's a good governance practice, that if we hold the rest of the district accountable, we should hold ourselves accountable, and we should take the time to reflect on our work. Because a lot of times, the work of the board is really focused on the work of the district and what's going on in the schools. But sometimes, we really need to take a step back and say, how are we doing? How are we doing in our governance work? You know, there's more and more evidence that says that high-performing boards, who work together with their superintendent, can make a positive impact on student achievement. So we really want to make sure that we're giving our students every benefit that we can by looking at our work and, you know, saying, are we doing the best that we can for our students? So the way this process works is that each board member completes an online self-evaluation, and then New Jersey School Boards compiles it into one anonymous document. So that's what I'm here tonight, then, is to review that compiled document with the board. So it is, you have both the complete document, but then I also put a summary together, because the document itself is like twenty pages by the time all is said and done. So was able to consolidate it down to about three pages, because that's a little bit easier way to talk about it. So all nine board members filled it out, and then also the superintendent filled it out as well. So there are nine different areas that the board evaluates itself in. And so the first, the top half of each area talks about the board. So that's why there are ten responses to each one of those, because of the inclusion of the superintendent in the process. And then the bottom part of each half is about you, the board member, so that there's nine responses to that. So the board's self-evaluation is based on a four-point-oh scale. So as we look at then, you know, I kind of did an average and said, okay, if I took those nine areas and looked at how the board evaluated itself in each one of those nine areas for the board's score, the overall average was a three-point-eight. And so, you know, that really kind of demonstrates something that, you know, I'm sure you probably know in your work of that you're a high-performing board, right? That you have demonstrated that as you reflect on your work, look at the work you do together, and had all these different indicators to kind of identify your work, that it, you know, it came to be that the scores would reflect a high-performing board. So one of the things that I did was said, you know what, okay, instead of just taking this year, looking at it by itself, I'm like, okay, I was here ten years ago, I'm going to see what that looked like. So in twenty fourteen, the board's overall score was a three-point-seven. So then I'm like, okay, let's fast forward five more years. So in twenty nineteen, the board's score was a three-point-eight. So the reason that that's significant is because you have been able to sustain this level of performance over at least a ten-year period. So for some boards, sometimes they get that snapshot, or there's one good year, but how do you make this be part of your culture? How do you make this be part of the way of saying, this is how our board does things? This is the way that we operate. And so just wanted to say that, to me, this board's self-evaluation, and the fact that you were able to sustain it over a ten-year period, reflects the fact that you really do have that culture of a high-performing board. So I just kind of wanted to kind of put it back to the board and just kind of see kind of what your reflections are about your work. And as you look at how you work together, you know, how you feel that, you know, what that looks like to you, and how you feel that that has made a difference. And then also, I think there's, you know, some significance in the kind of the length of service, right? That your board members have had, and the opportunity that you have had to come together and work together as a board team. So also wondered kind of what, you know, thoughts about that as well. So I'm going to kind of, before I get into this, kind of turn it over to the, any board members that would wish to respond of kind of what your overall reflections are about your work together as a team. And so we'll put it out there.
Yeah, there you go. Well, I would just say that, in general, we do work together pretty well. We obviously have different opinions about many things, but I think that, in the end, we respect each other's opinions and seek to find common ground where we can. And I think that lends a lot to the atmosphere of this board and the lack of contention that many other boards have. I also appreciate the fact that we do get together before our meetings and have a chance to socialize and get to know each other and build friendships and bonds beyond just being on the board. So I think that helps our atmosphere here.
Yeah, I agree with David. I think our board really understands what its roles are, and I think it understands the concept that an effective board member makes an effective board, and effective boards impact student achievement in very positive ways. I think we get that. You know, I believe to be an effective board member and board, you need trust, training, and experience. And I think we have that here. And I think we also understand it's very important that we're cohesive here, and we do our work in committee, and that's where we produce things that get, that get approved here. And lastly, I'll just say, we also understand how important it is to work at having a good relationship with the superintendent. In this case, we don't have to work too hard to have that good relationship. But for boards that need it, that's important.
Just, when I, when I first came on the board, it's been a while, but you have the training when you first come on the board. And the class I went to, I remember, one of the things they always said, they said, "You do not want your board meeting to be the best show in town." And I think that's something we've definitely adhered to. This board meeting has never been the best show in town. We work well, I think it's very professional, it's very cordial, and it's like it should be. It's just a pleasure to be on the board, it's a pleasure to associate with the people who are on the board with me. And like Karen and David said, we all get along very well with each other. And if there is any dirty laundry, we never air it in public.
It impressed me when you did the ten-year, five years and ten years ago, and how the scores were three-eight, three-seven, three-nine, which tells me that the board has been very consistent. Board members come, board members go. I think the training is something that, I'm a little disappointed that the school boards have taken that mandate that you had to go when you were first elected away. But I think a lot of us, as Mike said, learned stuff at that time. We were required to go. It's one thing having a webinar or a Zoom or something like that. That helped out, but the training, I think, is second to none. And I think, as my colleagues have indicated, that we may not always vote together the same way, but we all have a unified approach to everything, and our basic bottom line is the kids. And that's why we're all here. We're not here for self-glory or any of that stuff. We're here to make the best education, and I think the students that were down here gave a glowing report of what's happening so far, and their graduation exercises for the last umpty-ump years have been nothing but positive. And I thank my colleagues, the administration, and I thank the school boards for that.
Yeah, I just want to chime in there a little bit. Exactly right. These volunteers put a lot of time, they're away from their families, and the success of the schools, you know, is a reflection on the commitment that they all put into this. I appreciate all their support, but as Karen said about the committee work, that's where a lot of the work is being ironed out, and then these meetings go very smoothly because of all the work that's going on behind the scenes. So the board has been extremely supportive of all the initiatives or recommendations that have been put forth, all on the behalf of the students. So it's been a pleasure. We have board members from two years to thirty years here, and it just shows you the cohesion that we have with this board. So it's been a pleasure working with everybody.
So I began my journey during COVID in January, and that was, that was actually tough for me for the first year, because I didn't have the one-on-one with everyone, even though everyone helped me and offered me advice, and I was on Zoom taking classes, which were wonderful. And sometimes I'd be in different counties, looking what State County was doing, so I learned a lot. But everyone here really supports one another. We do have differences in opinion, but overall, we always come to an understanding of the other person's viewpoint. And sometimes people change their minds, and sometimes they don't, but everyone is very respectful. And it is easy to work with a great superintendent, and we know that we are not in charge of running the schools. And that's what's, I think, so, so important. I think that's how boards get in trouble. We support you, we oversee, but you are very kind. You always ask us our opinions on things. And I really feel like that the school's in great hands, not only from our superintendent, but our attorney, our business administrator, her team, and the rest of my colleagues, and of course, both of you, Casey and Andrea, sorry. Thank you so much.
I'll just say, it's been a pleasure working with all of you for two years now. I could count on no fingers the amount of votes that we've had that have had an opposition to them. Everything's been pretty unanimous, which goes to show, you know, we act as a unit, we talk things out beforehand, and I think that goes a long way. I'd be remiss to not mention, you know, we have the president of the New Jersey Board Association on our board, which helps go a long way in things. And a good administration makes it easy for all of us, so thank you.
Okay, I wasn't going to just talk, like, because everyone was talking, but I have to say, so ditto. But really, I guess the point I want to make is that I've never once doubted that everybody is here for the purpose of doing the best that we can in the role that we're supposed to serve, to serve the students of this community and the community, and do what's best for the children. And that's just been a pleasure, and just in thinking, you know, about running for multiple terms, many of us have done it, that we really do serve so well is why we want to do it, and the purpose that we feel like we're accomplishing in a good way. And I just really do enjoy serving with all of you, and I think we do good work. So thank you.
And in addition to what everyone else has said, I think every meeting that we have, we also get an outside evaluation of how well we're doing. And that's with all the audience and the townspeople who show up. And there's really no shortage of outspoken parents in this town. And it's the fact that we don't have a lot of outspokenness at our board meetings. Every once in a while, yeah, there may be an issue, but then we address it as a board, or Dr. Gorman addresses it as the superintendent, and it gets taken care of, and we move on. So from that perspective, I see that, as an outside evaluation, we're doing the job that the town expects us to do, because there's not a long line of people here to talk at our board meetings, and I actually see that as, okay, we're doing a good job. So I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, I have to agree with about everything everyone has said tonight. I think we work well as a cohesive unit, and we are lucky to have a great administration here running the school.
I would say again, that I would say that you probably all said it better than I could, right? That I think that this really just kind of demonstrates everything that you reflected in the board's self-evaluation. And as I was sitting here listening to you, I'm thinking, like, I could take the video from this meeting and use it as a training, right? Of saying to other boards that this is really what this should look like, and that it really does help make a difference when it looks like this. So I just wanted to say again, kind of echo the sentiment that you all have said, and just to really thank you for the time, the effort, the work that you do. And like I said, sometimes just as much as that's just part of what you do, not only day in and day out, but in your case, year in and year out, right? Just want to just kind of say, sometimes we just kind of need to reflect and kind of really just kind of validate that work and say, you know what? We kind of know we're doing good work, but then when we fill out the board's self-evaluation and we see these scores that we're getting, and we see that we're sustaining them, this has kind of helped validating what we kind of know that we're doing. But sometimes it's good to just see it on paper and just kind of see the fact that, you know, we are all, again, expressing our opinions about this work and to just take some time to talk about it. So unless anyone else has any other thoughts about the board's self-evaluation, I just really wanted to say thank you for everyone for taking the time and for doing the great work that you do.
Thank you. I would just say one additional thing, is that I do appreciate the self-evaluation, because it gets me thinking back again what my roles are, what I should be looking on, where I should be focusing on. And it gets me to think about how can I be a better board member as I go through the different standards and qualities that make us a high-functioning board. So thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you for coming, we really appreciate it. You come several times a year, and your advice and wisdom is always appreciated, so thank you so much.
It's my pleasure.
Mark, you cue us up for the next presentation, please? One correction, the presentation that was just happened is going to be the NJ SBA, School Boards Association. So it's not the ASA, different organization. Thank you, students, appreciate it. All right, so our next presentation is Cateen Slunt. Our business administrator is going to walk us through all the great things that happened over the summer and give you an update on our facilities.
So, at this point, the buildings, seven buildings that are the schools throughout the district, are now, have reached fifty years older, old or older. And with buildings that are that age, there are all kinds of challenges that come to pass. And the Board of Education committed almost a decade ago to begin a process in which the educational facilities of the district would be renovated and updated and maintained so that they would be in the position to service another fifty years' worth of students. And so, as part of that, we have really, since the referendum in two thousand seventeen, we've just been continuing that commitment that the board has made to the buildings, and we've worked through various improvements at each level. So the first is going to be the high school. In terms of what we've done in the past, we have done repairing of the exterior facade and the redoing of the stadium fields. We have done roof repair and have installed solar panels. We have done work within the building in terms of updating the bathrooms and the gymnasiums. And we have done work within the hallways and the rotunda in terms of brightening them up and cleaning them up. This summer in particular, we did roof repair and brickwork on the two thousand and one addition. That's the addition that's in the back of the building. And we did repair work on the hallways and the lockers. As we begin to look forward, we will be upgrading the electrical systems and fire systems, repairing the bleachers, and we are looking into an aerial athletic apparatus that would expand offerings at the high school as well as for the entire town. So we've done a lot of work at the high school, and pretty much now, we're beginning to now do more maintenance work than big renovation work. Lazar was the next one that we worked on. We redid their exterior facade, and we added a security vestibule to the outside of the building. We have done roof repair, again, to take on solar panels. We updated the media center, the bathrooms, and the gymnasiums. And then we did a big renovation of the hallways and the floors in all of the wings as those walls were beginning to crumble from fifty years' worth of use. This summer, we did renovation work in the cafeteria and the interior vestibule. So here, you're seeing the exterior vestibule when you walk into the building. We did work on the inside in order to give a cohesive look. We installed way signs. What way signs are, is they tell you which way to go. That is a security upgrade, but that actually is what they're called. We did replacing of door hardware within the building for security reasons. And we began the process of upgrading the science labs. That's a multi-year project that we just began this past summer, and then we'll be adding to it as we proceed forward. In terms of projects that are upcoming, we will be replacing the univentilators in the sixth-grade wing. One of the discussions that we had last year was that all the univentilator systems throughout the district are now also fifty years old, and they really, there aren't parts anymore for these units. And so this is the beginning of that replacing process that'll occur at all the schools. And so this is the beginning of that replacing process that'll occur at all the schools. Cedar Hill, in terms of the past, we redid the gymnasium, which is the building or the part of the building that you see on the left of the picture that you are looking at. We also did roof repair to take on solar panels. We did updates to the media center, bathrooms and gymnasium. And inside, we did a lot this year, this summer, with lighting and painting the hallways, brightening everything up, brightening up the classrooms. For all of the elementaries, we did something called a seam and coat cover on the roofs. What that does is that puts, it seals all the seams of the flat roofs and then puts a cover on top of it in order to prolong the life of the roof. And then we continued to complete the exterior vestibule, which you're seeing in that picture right there, and did a lot of upgrades to the facade. This particular picture, in the case of the sister schools, which is Cedar Hill, Woodmont and William Mason, if you recall, maybe 10 years ago, the buildings looked tired. They looked like they had serviced 50 years' worth of students. What we wanted to do with Cedar Hill was we wanted to freshen it up in terms of unifying it color-wise, but also making it more inviting, more something that a new kindergartner who's going to school for the first time would be excited to be going to. And this example of Cedar Hill is what we were going to propose to do for both William Mason and Woodmont come next year. In terms of work that's still going on here, we still are doing the parking lot. If you have been at Cedar Hill, what you've noticed is the upper parking lot, it was basically falling in on itself. So we've done work there where we've put in a wall to hold it up, and then we'll be doing repaving. We will be replacing door hardware within the building. And then again, similar to Lazar, where we're updating the interior vestibule to match the external one, we'll be doing that at Cedar Hill. Valley View is another one that has had a lot of work done at it. We've been doing a lot of exterior facade work, and we did a whole new entranceway. This is the sign that you see as you come into Valley View. Again, work on the roof in order for it to take solar panels. We did the media center and the bathrooms and the gymnasium. This year, we spent a lot of time inside. We did lighting and painting of the hallways. Again, we did seam and coat cover on the roof in order to get some longevity from that roof. They are slated for an interior vestibule, so there won't be anything outside. The security vestibule will actually be in the building. We'll be replacing door hardware, and we will be adding a staff bathroom. We did a lot of movement of programs within the district for the '24, '25 school year, so we have a lot more staff at Valley View, and they need more bathrooms. The three buildings that have not gotten as much love at varying amounts are Woodmont, William Mason and Hilldale. And that's not because we don't love those buildings, but we weren't able to tackle all the projects all at once. So for example, with Woodmont and William Mason, a lot of the work that you saw at Cedar Hill in terms of unifying the exterior, putting in the exterior vestibule for security reasons, making it more inviting, that same work would be proposed for William Mason and Woodmont for the following year, summer of '25. And Hilldale is a challenging building in that architecturally, it's challenging. So we intend to go and do facade work as well as the vestibule for the summer of '25. And that's a much larger project than William Mason or Woodmont will be because of the whole building will need some reworking. In terms of what we've done in all places, we have done the bathrooms and the media centers and the gyms. Both Woodmont and William Mason, because of the way their roofs were, were able to take the solar panels, so we did do some roof work there. Hilldale is one building that does not have solar panels, and that was based on both the roof line as well as the way it's oriented. We weren't getting enough sun in order to make it worthwhile to put solar panels on it. All of them had the seam and coat cover for their roofs in order to extend the length of their roofs. And as I indicated, we will be doing exterior work at all three. So as you move through all seven buildings, what you see is us really trying to get them ready and prepared to keep going. Definitely, the board and the administration recognize that we are stewards of these buildings and that we need to leave them, our phrase is "leave them better than what we found them." And that is the goal that we're trying to do.
Thank you. Can I ask a quick question? On the univentilators, how many more years are we going to be working on those?
You will easily be working on them for another five to 10 years.
Are we saving any of the good ones that are still usable so that we can replace other ones in other buildings that break?
There's really not much left of these after we pull them out to really reuse them.
I was just thinking that, you know, to salvage something.
Certainly, if there's anything salvageable, but some of these units are literally glued together to keep them going. So there's not much salvageable from them. We are looking at some other opportunities. PSENG or New Jersey Power and Light is offering a program, we're waiting for the second round to open, for things like replacement of units like this for energy reasons. And we're going to see if we can jump on that. I can't do all, certainly can't do all the projects because we're talking millions of dollars' worth of projects, but I can do it in some locations. And what we're going to do is see if we can get in on the next round of those. So we are trying to be very creative of trying to find places to fund. We did that with a lot of the programs through ROD grants that were offered by the state. But there is a lot of work that needs to be done on the univentilators, and so there's only some, I can chip away at it, I can't really do it in one big swoop.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anyone?
Sec curiosity, what is an aerial athletic press?
No, you go.
Well, Project Adventure, if you know that term, that's when you have the ropes courses outside or sometimes in gymnasiums. It's something that we're looking into right now. Project Adventure is the trademark name, like Kleenex or Q-tip, but so its technical name is this aerial athletic facility. So we're looking into putting it out there. The kids would be harnessed up, going to zip lining and doing climbing. It's all about trust, it's all about building confidence and things like that. So it's, we'll be going out for a bid for that pretty soon, and then hopefully have that on our campus.
Where would it go?
Right, well, they're going to do some surveying and all that, but one of the ideas is out there by the softball fields, the baseball fields, tucked away in a corner that wouldn't interfere with anything.
Hi, Kaitine. I know a few families from Hilldale, and they, I feel like some of them feel like my poor school.
Yes, we understand.
I've heard that a lot, even when I talk to folks. So my question is, can you communicate to us, I don't know how it'd get to them, what they will be getting in the future? Because I know the topography is kind of, the building is, there's a lot going on there. It's small, so can you?
Well, they're going to be getting an exterior vestibule. If you're looking at the picture that's still up on the screen, where the walkway is into the building, that's actually where the vestibule will go. We would have it fit into that little slot between the classroom that's on your left and the gym that's on your right. And then what, we have some drawings from the architects of updating the exterior look to do some cleanup work. The problem is that that building was originally made of basically concrete, and so the effervescence over years and years of time of water has discolored the concrete, and we would give it a refreshment to do that. As we're beginning to now figure out how to do that, that's the piece that has held this particular project up.
I guess my question is, I know it's, there's a lot of stu, it's a smaller school. So when they do things for the parents, there's not enough room for the parents and the kids. If they do a Halloween parade, there's not enough. And the other students and all the other schools get to have that. So I just wanted to share that concern with you. I'm sure you've heard it before.
There are, in terms of the size of the classrooms, that's our smallest school. So when we talk about, you know, 20 in a classroom, they're feeling it a little bit more than some of the other buildings, just because the rooms are a lot smaller. It was never as large of a school as some of the other locations. And this is an example of it, where it's difficult to have everybody together due to that. I don't know that I'm going to be able to solve that particular problem as part of this, but that is one of the reasons why this project has been held up for so long, is because we're trying to be creative to solve some of those other types of problems while doing the renovation work that we know needs to be done in terms of the facade getting sealed and that type of thing.
You know, at one point, well, not at one point, Hilldale was designed to be an open school, an open floor plan. And then some years ago, the walls were put up and classrooms were made, for the most part. How did that, how does that, or at all, if it does at all, impact the small classroom sizes or anything else that needs to be done at Hilldale?
Well, and part of what Hilldale faces, which is the case of any building that was designed as an open classroom building, because Hilldale wasn't the only one, they're all over New Jersey. And then you close the spaces up. Their HVAC systems were designed to flow the air as though they were open. So you always end up with problems with heating and cooling. And as we begin to consider some work at Hilldale, we're considering the fact that we'd like to do what we're doing at Lazar, but at Hilldale, one of the advantages of us being in 2024 is that when you buy that univentilator, it has a cooling component to it that can be activated, and it's a very energy, high-efficiency cooling unit. That would solve some of the problems that Hilldale faces, because right now, if the system was built for that air to move, we've put up walls, so you're getting hot and cold spots. And the way we compensate it is we compensate it with these duckless splits that are hanging on the walls. But those duckless splits are coming to the end of their life, too, and they're going to need replacing. And when we do that replacement, we would pick something more like what we're doing at Lazar, those high-efficiency units that can do both heating and cooling.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
So you see the wonderful things that are going on here, and I just want to thank Kaitine for doing such a wonderful job, her whole office, everybody that's working there to make these things happen, but also getting out there with Steve Toth and his maintenance department, as well as the custodians. They just do a great job of making this all happen. And it's lots of visits out to the field, talking to the engineers and everything, and pushing these projects forward. So excellent job. Sure. What's wrong with you? We gotta buy you a new mic.
I took advantage of the tour that Kaitine and Tom offered. And while it's wonderful to see this on paper, to see it in person really drives home the amount of work that's been going on in our schools. And I just want to thank both of you for all of the work that you've done. And if, you know, if you're ever in some of the schools, take notice of some of the work that's been done. In particular, I was amazed at the light differences created by the new fixtures in Cedar Hill, because one hallway has them and the other hallway doesn't, and it's a big contrast. Even the Lazar cafeteria looks fantastic, even though not much was done, but it just, thank you. Facilities look great.
Yeah, huge difference between 2D and 3D, but yes, exactly right. Thank you. The other person I want to thank is Sue Marinella, who is also making a lot of these changes at the last second, helping us put this whole presentation together. She's done a wonderful job capturing the pictures, as well as helping us communicate all these wonderful things that are going on throughout the district. So thank you, Sue. Just one of the things that Sue helped me with was put out this parent survey. We hear from parents all the time through different communication channels, but we wanted to try to capture the essence of what a lot of them are feeling, what are they saying, and what's going on. So we put out a parent survey, which hasn't been done anytime recently, and we gave us, we got a lot of good, honest feedback from everybody. Parents were asked to fill this out, one per student, or if they wanted to do it just for their family, different grade levels, they had the option of doing that, but that was this past June. This is just going to be a summary of everything. I didn't capture all the questions and put this in here, but just going to give you a quick overview. So we had about 23% of the high school parents fill out the survey. Again, it's the same thing with the middle school. And at the elementary schools, we had 35% of the parents, which is, you know, for the elementary, that was a little bit over 400 responses. At the middle school, that was just under 200, and the high school was just around there. By industry standards, that's, those are pretty good results coming back from the community, that you have enough input to really gauge what people are thinking. Just a word cloud for what's going on at the high school. So you have challenging was one of the major words that came up when we asked parents for feedback, and they had a free write. They said good, students are engaged, diverse, excellent, comprehensive, opportunities, rigorous, lots of different words up there. And you can see, as you go through the smaller, smaller words, those were used less often. So that's how people felt about the high school. Looking at Lazar, you see same kinds of things, engaging, challenging, good, appropriate, supportive, safe, the list goes on, great, caring, independent. So those were some positive words, as well as some other constructive feedback from some parents there. And the last one, at the, all the elementary schools combined, seeing great, caring, fun, challenging, helpful, engaged. So again, all positive words, and you're seeing a lot of the same words being used for all three levels. I know this is a little bit blurry on this next slide. We had a screen capture it a little bit to put it onto this presentation, but when you look at this, you'll see that 86% of the parents were satisfied overall with the quality of education. This was at the elementary level. And then you see 83% would recommend the child's school to other parents. Moving on to the right, the academic challenge is appropriate for their child, 75% agreed or strongly agreed, this is the blue and the red bars, and 77% were satisfied with the academic progress of their children. So by industry standards, again, anything between a 75% and an 85% is considered very good, and we're fitting right in there with those measurements. At Lazar, similar, a little bit lower, but similar, 76 were satisfied with the overall quality. 71%, they said they would recommend their child's school to other parents. 70% saying that the academic challenge is appropriate, and 72% saying that the academic progress of their children they were satisfied with. So again, you're looking at three quarters of the parents coming back saying positive things about what's going on. And the last, at the high school, they go up a little bit more. Again, 80% in the first category, 79% in the second one, 75% that the academic challenge is appropriate, and the last one, 76% that they are satisfied with the progress of their child. Another slide, just all the three different levels. This is looking at the academics. I didn't do all of them. We actually looked at like eight or 10 of the different subjects, but I just wanted to capture four of the main core subjects that we look at. But what you'll see is, at the elementary level, which is the top left there, you'll see, again, very satisfied and satisfied, you'll see that most of the scores are at the 78 percentile for the elementary. So the parents are satisfied or very satisfied, 78% or a little bit more, with language arts at the elementary level, with math, with science and with social studies. When you drop down to Lazar, you'll see the numbers range between 71 and 77%. So still within that three-quarter range of parents being satisfied or very satisfied, again, with those four core subjects. And when you go to the high school, the number raises for those four subjects, between 80 and 83% of the parents were satisfied with language arts, math, science and social studies, and being just very satisfied or satisfied. So again, very strong numbers that are coming out and that the parents are pleased with the education that they're getting here. These are just some interesting data points that we wanted to take a look at. So the first one at the top-left corner of the pie chart shows about 65, 66% of the parents were saying, yes, about 65%, that the homework that their child is receiving at the high school is just right. I know it sounds like the Three Bears, but it was just, just right. And then you had equal pie charts there of 17% saying it was too much and too little. So it looks like we found pretty much the sweet spot there at the high school for homework. Moving to the right-hand side, we asked how many parents are having their children participate in SAT or ACT preparation-type classes? And it was about 49% of the parents. SAT or ACT preparation-type classes. And it was about 49% of the parents were saying that they are getting some outside tutoring to help them that way. 29% said no, and 21% it was not applicable to them yet. On the bottom-left, you'll see that parents are supplementing their child's education with tutoring outside of the SAT or ACT prep, and you have 39%, almost 40% of the parents saying, yes, they are getting some kind of outside tutoring to help their children. And on the right-hand side, how many parents are getting involved with private counseling for college? And 23% said, yes, they're doing that, whereas 52% said no. So just interesting, fun facts there, just to give you a gauge of what's going on outside of the school with the parents. Some words that came up with the comments section from the parents, that I just cherry picked a bunch of them, that they think a Wellness Day monthly would be helpful, some constructive feedback. And we got lots of them. We got dozens and dozens of the comments. My child loves the high school. I'm delighted that they had such a positive experience, great school district, amazing teachers, the arts program, really top-notch. That came up at all the levels. I was very pleasing to see that. I'm very satisfied, keep doing what you're doing, not to, that we need to do a better job preparing them for college. So it was a little bit all over there, but we take all that feedback seriously, and we'll be taking a look at this as we move forward. At Lazar, similar comments. I'm thoroughly impressed with the staff and leadership. My child feels challenged. Thanks for the after-school extra help. Our child has done well, working with their abilities in ELA and math. My child has really enjoyed music and the musical theater program, and overall, it's been a great experience. The two pie charts, I'm sorry, the two pie charts over there, my homework that my child is receiving, again, similar numbers that you saw at the high school, about 65% said it's just right. And then that they're supplementing their children's education with professional tutoring came out to about 59% were saying, no, they're not, and only 41% are getting outside tutoring to help their child. And last, at the elementary level, I'm thrilled, the teachers are outstanding, the environment is nurturing, mindful activities resonate with my son, too many kids in a class was something that came up once or twice. The teachers and staff are caring, the teachers are well-qualified, and the program well-executed, and more arts, theater would be great at the elementary level. The amount of homework the children are receiving, again, just right. 67% of the parents are feeling that it's just right in the right area for that. And 28% said they're getting outside tutoring to help their children with their core subjects at that level. So that is the summary of the overall. We had some other information about Medlec and things like that, but we're working with our directors of Medlec about that. That's helping inform us. There was a lot more information, or more opportunities parents were asking for during the holidays, during the summer. We're taking a lot of that feedback they're giving, and we're going to be trying to enhance more of the programs. So that's a quick summary of overall of everything that was going on on the parents' mind back in June. Mike?
If you could go back to the academic slide. Yeah, this one. Yeah, it's, a lot of the charts look very consistent with each other. The one that's a little, little off is high school math, where the dissatisfied and the very dissatisfied, looks like they're much higher than for the other subjects. Is there any drill down on?
No, there's no drill down. The yellow is that it's neither satisfied, it's neutral, neither satisfied or whatever, but their numbers still fell within the 80%, you know, percentile. So yes, it was a little bit lower than the others, that they went as high as 83, 84%, but, so that was a little bit lower at 80. So it's still within, you know, they're close enough.
I was just wondering if there's a reason why the dissatisfied and very dissatisfied are so much higher than the other subjects? If there's a drill down, or if there's comments or reasons provided?
I'd have to go back and take a look and try to really figure out, you know, some comments from parents were very specific, and they even named their child, and then other people were just very general. So you try to get a gist of what they're trying to say, and we'll take another look at that.
Yeah, I think also maybe, you know, a lot of times, people don't answer surveys unless they have a reason to, like, you know, there's something bugging them, either positive or negative. It tends to be those people who answer these surveys. You know, this is not a, it's not a scientifically conducted survey, it's not a true random sampling of the population. But I think all in all, it shows that people are generally well-satisfied with this. I think they do like the education they're receiving here in the district, and I think it's also reflected in how the rest of the state views us.
Yeah. And it's a very good baseline. So I would like to do something like this in another year or so from now, and then see if it continues, or if we see improvements. But it's a good way to get some good, positive feedback.
Yeah, I think maybe as you go on, you might see more participation.
Possibly.
Hopefully. But it's also always a good idea to get some feedback, even if it's incomplete. At least, you know, we can get some idea of what's going on, and the perceptions, and, you know, and look for ways to improve.
Absolutely, correct.
Always looking for ways to improve.
Correct.
Anyone else? Questions, comments about that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mark.
Kateen, business administrators report?
Nothing more.
More? Come on. Okay, there's a lot of good news, even though it's still early in the year. There's a lot of good news there. I encourage people to read it. Let's go to committee reports, facilities and finance, Karen. Come on, you can do it.
So the facilities and finance committee met right before tonight's meeting, and we can say our budget is healthy. We can also say that facilities projects in the school district are moving ahead very nicely, as we just heard from Mrs. Slunt's report earlier.
Thank you. Curriculum, Michelle?
No report.
Okay, policy, Joe?
Just that we're having the adoption tonight of the 15 policy and regulations.
Okay, thank you. Communications, Mike Rapport?
We're meeting next Monday.
Monday, okay. Safety, Christine?
Yes, thank you. We had our safety and security committee meeting on September 11th. So I'll briefly go over some things that we discussed. We talked about the police, the different ways they're patrolling the schools, and how they're coming into the schools, and this wonderful relationship we have with them in town, as well as the sheriff's department. We talked about the status of the security vestibules at Lazar, Cedar Hill, Valley View, and then what we're doing in the future for the elementary school and the high school. We talked about a visitor ID system for the schools before entering, and Lazar will be our first project, so we're excited about that. We talked about share 911, the communication system for the faculty and staff. Cybersecurity is most important to us as well. We updated our software. We have a third-party audit, which will come and see how we're doing. No major events have occurred regarding threats, only non-critical. We talked about our phishing training, how it was very successful. We talked about other types of training that are going on. We closed some security gaps as far as our cybersecurity, which was great. We also talked about purchasing LifeVac for our schools and for when the kids go on field trips, and that's a device that will help in case someone, the thrusts don't work, this will help any type of obstruction. So it's just a backup. So the administration's going to be looking at that. And then we also spoke about Sheriff Gannon's program, Hope One, and different types of training for overdoses. And that was it.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, the phishing training was for scamming of emails, not phishing going out there. So I just want to make sure before people think we're all going on phishing trips or something like that, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman.
Okay, I know. Okay. Delegate liaisons, Karen, New Jersey School Boards?
We're having our board of directors meeting on Friday.
Okay. Michelle, Morris County School Boards?
Yeah, they're having a hybrid meeting in person at Quanik Township High School. The topic's mental health resources for your school district. It's on October 2nd, so hopefully some people could attend. It's unfortunately on Merche Shana, so I will not be able to attend.
Joe, Morris County Educational Services?
We had a meeting last Wednesday. They are in the process of beginning the annual audit, which will be done over the next few months, as well as our next meeting will be on October 9th.
Great. And DAC, drug awareness?
Drug awareness met on September 5th. We're taking part in the county ID checking initiative, which is handing out ID guides to all the local businesses that sell tobacco and alcohol. The guide goes through each state ID, gives them a clear picture of what it should be looking like, so they can check it. We're also taking part in Montville Day on October 13th, as well as working with the art department on doing the poster contest for Red Ribbon Week, which takes place at the end of October.
Thank you. Yeah, and by the way, that's a good point, real quick, Montville Day, October 13th. We will not be having a meeting before then, so thank you for reminding us. Okay, Charlie, Montville Athletic Boosters?
There has not been a meeting yet. I'm waiting for Mr. Guarino to notify me.
Okay. Liaisons to the schools, Karen, Cedar Hill?
No report.
Okay, Charlie, Hilldale?
No report.
Joe, Valley View?
Last Thursday, they had their back-to-school night, which was very well-attended. Our first PTA meeting will be next, tomorrow, Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Okay. William Mason, John?
First meeting will be October 16th.
Okay, Mike Palmer, Woodmont?
No report.
Okay. Christine or Michelle Lazar? It was Christine?
No report.
No report. Okay, and then the high school, I attended that one, that was a virtual one. All the meetings are going to be virtual this year at the high school, at PTC. Hopefully that will increase attendance. So we're, they talked a little bit about the back-to-school night. It's going to be a soft opening at 6:00. There's no homeroom before the 6:30 start. They're going to be talking about the clubs and the cafeteria before the back-to-school night starts, so come and see that. We have two SAT testing dates, the first of which is October 5th, PSAT is October 23rd. Okay, and they talked about photos. Homecoming is coming up on the 9th of October, and the homecoming dance, I guess, is the 10th?
I just want to jump on that. So we are now a testing site for SATs. We have one date on the books, but that was something we had to apply for. We haven't been in SAT site for either a long time or ever, but we're happy to have that back and offer that to our students.
Yeah, make it more convenient. Okay, and then before I go on, just one more thing. We had a meeting with the mayor, vice mayor, and administrator, township administrator, a few days ago. We talked a lot about the ongoing development in town and the housing. We talked about the crosswalk lights that are being installed by Lazar, and how they're going to be potentially installing more of these crosswalk lights at all of the schools. This is going to be an ongoing process. I think they're thinking maybe Hilldale next in the 2026 range. And I think we will leave it there. We, again, we're talking to them a lot about the impact of the housing on the schools. It's going to be a big issue. Right now, our enrollment is going up. We're seeing a lot of new kids coming from the developments, but also a lot of turnover in town. And that's having a significant impact on our schools, especially the elementaries. So it's an area of grave concern. So, okay, so let's move on. Next area is public participation. Anyone has any comments or questions about items on the agenda? I invite you to come up, state your name. Come on up, state your name, grab the microphone, state your name, address, and let us know what you're thinking about the agenda.
Hi, I'm Danielle Mangione Vassar. My address is 18 Rockaway Valley Road in Montville, and I'm the secretary for Montville Kiwanis. And on behalf of Montville Kiwanis Club, I would like to thank the Board of Education for supporting the approval of the Builders' Club advisor. As a former Builders Club member from the 90s, I'm thrilled to see this chapter revitalized. It's a great opportunity for Lazar students to develop leadership skills, take on responsibility, and participate in service projects that positively impact our community. By empowering students to collaborate and give back, we're helping shape future leaders while allowing them to make a meaningful difference today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, consent motion for items A, I through N?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the minute? Section J, administration, any questions there? Questions on facilities and finance? I'm sorry, what? For items on the agenda? Builders Club? You want to come up for Builders Club? Come on up. Tom?
Thank you. My hearing sometimes is not that well.
What?
But in any event, I had, I had two topics, at least, that I like to just comment on. Number one, I'd like to thank Danielle and the Kiwanis members, and of course, Charlie is a member as well. I'm a member since 1978, and at that time, we had a key club, which was not sponsored by the Montville Kiwanis, it was sponsored by another group, another Kiwanis group. But when Kiwanis came into being in '78, we took it over, and we were proud for the last 46 years to be part of them. In addition, the Builders Club was, started somewhere, I believe, Charlie, in around the beginning of the 80s or something like that. And it ran for many, many, many years. And for some reason, it stopped, but that's okay, because now we're back on track. And I'd like to thank this board on behalf of Danielle and the Kiwanis Club for looking at a way to get us going again with the Builders Club. Danielle is a product of the Builders Club. She was a Builders Club at Lazar School, and that's nice to know. Maybe one day, I hope she sits on this board. But the other topic I wanted to talk about, which I was very much impressed with the presentation on the school by Kateen, and I have to say that in order to know where you are, where you want to go, you should know where you was in the past. These schools were, the elementary schools and Lazar were products of the late 60s and early 70s with the high school. And when I became a board member back in the mid-'90s, the first thing I did as a new board member, and having, first of all, was a split board, very factionalized, not like this board. I mean, we really had some, some problems, but we went through them. Charlie, you weren't on the board at that time, but you know the people, the principals at that time. But in any event, one thing that I did, we, I commandeered the school bus and took all the board members around to every elementary school. And it was really eye-opening. Windows, you could see on the sides, cracks, the roofs, everything. It was a, it was a mess, but now they had been built for about 25, close to 30 years, and maintenance was not one of the things that the earlier generations wanted to spend money on. But in any event, after the board saw that, we started to come together as a board because we had a common goal. And that goal was to try to get these schools going. We did a referendum, and every elementary school, including Lazar, was added on to. There were additions, there were, for the time, it was good. And then when I left the board, we already had ongoing with the high school, and I became the chairman of the advisory council for the building and the maintenance, or the new construction at the high school. So I'm very proud. Kateen, I think you're doing a great job in advising this board and making sure that we continue. I also have to say, as a resident, when I go around and I look at the schools and I see what's happening over the last few years, the vision and the facade is so much better than it used to be, which is good for our community because we do a than it used to be, which is good for our community, because we do attract people to our school system, or to our town by our school system. One last comment. I know I could go on and on for probably another ten minutes, but I have to say that Andrea and Casey have been around for thirteen years. I've worked with them. They are just great people, and you are lucky to have a staff, Tom, that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom.
One last thing, one last thing. I think this survey should go to the realtors in town, and they should be, you know, give them multiple copies, because they can hand them out to prospective newcomers in town.
We'll be putting it up on the website, but thank you, yes.
I think they need hard copies in their office.
As long as they give us a little bit back on that percentage of sales. That's how we'll pay, that's right, revenue stream. But, but, but thank you for your comments, but you know, what you see on the outside is also happening on the inside, not just physically, but with the curriculum and with what's going on. So we've done a lot of changes, including this year. Andrea and her team have really put together some great things at the elementary level, and we're working them all the way up to the high school level. So over the past couple of board meetings, you've seen the different students doing presentations, the awards they're winning, the different programs we're offering. So it's happening not only physically, but also with the softer things of the curriculum.
The academics.
Academics.
Yeah. Are there any other questions or comments from the public? No? Okay, then I'll close the public participation and move back to the consent resolution. I think we did I and J. So any comments about facilities and finance? No? Section L, personnel, any questions, comments about personnel? A lot of approvals there. And then section M, curriculum instruction. We also have a lot of courses that we are approving, for the most part. These are very minor changes to these, for the most part. And then section N, we have all of Joe's policies. There you go. Okay, any questions? None? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes, abstain K four AF.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, abstain on K one, check nine-two-two-zero.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rapaport?
Abstain, section I, yes to everything else.
Dr. Mo Drak?
Yes. Okay, there is no more closed session to be had. Section Q, R, old business, general board comments, new business?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would like to make a general board comment.
Okay, Mr. Palmer, would you please?
Okay, yeah, I guess in reference to some questions that I had asked Dr. Gorman about the music program at Lazar, I got some questions. I just, I just want to share a lot of this, because it's really, really good news. You know, due to COVID a couple of years ago, the music numbers are really down. It's hard to do band, orchestra, things like that when you're doing it virtually, so numbers are down. But I look at what we have for this year, and just to compare it to a couple of years ago, I see sixth-grade band at Lazar, two years ago, forty-seven, this year, ninety-one. Orchestra, sixth grade, two years ago, thirty, this year, thirty-nine. Chorus, two years ago, forty-one, this year, a hundred and five. Right now, we have about fifty-three percent of the kids at Lazar are in either band, chorus, orchestra, or a combination thereof, so they're actually the majority. And I just think that's absolutely remarkable. I think it speaks both the teachers there and the supervisor. And the only thing I'm going to add is that with all these new kids in band, again, you got ninety-one in sixth grade, and a hundred and four in seventh and eighth. I just think as we build our budget for next year, I think we're going to have to make a commitment, maybe to purchasing some additional instruments. I mean, a district this size should probably have, you know, fifteen or sixteen French horns, about ten tubas, you know, ten euphoniums at least, and a couple bassoons, and also towards maintaining the ones we have. So, you know, like I said, it's great news, I'm really, really happy about it. I'm just, I think it gives us an opportunity for expansion in the future.
Well, we'll work on those numbers of instruments, but you know, I have to say, Mr. Green and the other music teachers over there have done a great job. Kids love Mr. Green over at Lazar.
Yeah, we have, you know, and we have, we have all the great teachers at Lazar right now. And the fact we have so many, such a great chorus teacher at Lazar, there's a great theater program for the high school, and you get this theater program from Lazar Theater into the high school theater program. And it's funny, Mike Scherer, when he was at the high school, he was the drama teacher, and he said he would have killed to have a theater program like that when he was at the high school. So, you know, kudos to everybody, let's just keep up the good work, and let's keep our foot on the accelerator.
And I'm glad you noticed that, and that was reflected in a lot of the parent surveys. There were lots and lots of positive remarks at all the levels for that, so thank you.
Yeah, and I would encourage everyone to come view the theater productions at both the high school and the middle school. They are fairly cheap, actually quite cheap, and they're quite good, so. Other board comments?
I just wanted to give a shout-out to our own Mrs. Marinello. She and Charlene Peterson are going to be speaking about strategic planning at the New Jersey School Public Relations Association's Fall Workshop on September twenty-third, so good luck with that.
Good job. Christine, you had something?
No, I just wanted to say, at the September eleventh ceremony, it's always so wonderful to see our students there, performing, singing, and supporting our veterans and those we lost on that day, and it was great seeing you too, Dr. Gorman, it was, I was so happy to see you, so I appreciate that. And Charlie was there also, but it's such, if anyone has never been there, it's really a beautiful ceremony that the township and the VFW put on.
Yeah, very moving stories. We had one of our high school students sing there. It's very touching, sad, but it was beautiful.
Are there any comments?
One more comment.
Well, wait, is this general or new? General, new, whatever you want.
I had the pleasure of attending an alumni event at the high school on Friday before the football game. I'm not sure if the administration was aware, Tom's nodding his head. We, right, right outside in the back parking lot there, Coach Rick Tabanta got a bunch of pizzas, and just via text message to maybe about ten, fifteen people, he texted, turned into forty, fifty former football players that he's coached. Wayne Guarino was there and supported it. And I was talking with Wayne, and if they could get some type of thing going where that's a yearly event, hopefully maybe move it down to the grassy knoll where we could have, you know, a real legitimate tailgate and cookout, I think that would be great for Mottville, just the pride, and the amount of people that moved back to this town that can be involved in that. I think that would grow exponentially over the next couple of years, and be good for the school and the town.
Get on it.
I will.
It's your job, it's your idea.
I already have.
Come on, take that ball and run with it.
No.
One other thing, I, thank you for reminding me, this is a, you didn't really, but I'll, we spoke, some of us have been speaking about cellphone use, particularly in the high school. This is something that maybe policy needs to take a look at. There are questions about the extent of cellphone usage during school times, whether it's necessary. We can talk more about it, but it is definitely something that's on the radar for at least a few members, and I would appreciate it if on your next policy meeting, you might have a discussion around this.
Yes, no, I think we should. I mean, it's all over in the national news, you know, you'd be seeing more and more districts taking a firm stance on cellphones, so.
Yeah.
We're definitely, we're having a meeting.
Yeah, it's, it would be a challenging thing to implement, but I think it's worth at least starting a discussion on it right now. Thank you. Anyone else? Board, public, any public participation comments? Anything you want to say? Seeing none? I'd like to, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
So, second.
Thank you. See you in October.